I'd like to welcome everybody to our May Commissioners Meeting because it's 80 degrees outside, so this can't be November. As I was coming to here this afternoon, it's 80 degrees on the car, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have a little bit of a change in the weather. I'm be presiding tonight. Chairman Frye is not able to be with us. He's undergoing his period of recovery from COVID, so he sends his regrets regarding that and indicated that this is only the fourth meeting in 40 years that he's missed as a Commissioner. So we'll excuse him this one time. So we hope that he continues to in his recovery, but he's doing well, and we look forward to having him back. We have a relatively lengthy agenda tonight, so we'll try to move through it as quickly as we can. I would like to remind you, if you'd like to speak during the public comment period, you'll need to come up and sign up for that as well. I think that's everything we need to talk about up front. Would like to recognize Reverend Michael Trogna, if he would come forward. We will have our invocation, and afterwards, we'll have a pledge to allegiance to the flag. If anybody, please stand, please.
You bow your heads with me. Father, in the matchless name of Jesus, we thank you, Lord God, for your incredible goodness, your amazing grace, for your consistent love. Thank you, Lord God, for every opportunity that you extend to us, God to serve community. What an honor, what a privilege to be called in this time of now, with all of the confusion, all of the noise. Thank you, Father, that we have you, because you are a just God. You're a God of equity. You are concerned with the whole of our community. So I thank you, Lord, for our county commissioners. Father, we lift Chairman Frye to you now in the name of Jesus and ask, God, that you would touch him in his body. You are also our healer. Whew, God, and we thank you for that. Boy, I feel like preaching. So Father, I ask you in Jesus' name to minister grace to our commissioners tonight. Give them wisdom. God, to speak those things that are necessary for the welfare of community. God, undergird them with your strength and your grace. As we go forth in this meeting, we ask, Holy Spirit, that you would rest in this time, that we might hear your voice in the midst of all of the noise. We honor you, Lord, for this privilege and for this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
We are streaming on Facebook Live and also on YouTube, so if you are presenting tonight or speaking, and this goes for the commissioners as well and staff, please speak into the microphone so that can be folks that are listening online or for later can hear everything that's being said. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize Elizabeth Mitchell with United Way. She has some special recognitions for the Governor's Volunteers of the Year.
May I turn around?
Sure. Just turn that around.
Of course, I'm taking control. I just needed to turn around so I could see everyone. So I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for having us here this evening. It's always a wonderful opportunity to come and to celebrate our volunteers in Randolph County. So with enough said, because I certainly know there is a long agenda, I'm going to tell you about a few volunteers and invite some folks up to help us this evening. And this evening, I have Senator Dave Craven, who is actually going to help me this evening and pin some pins and give awards to our award winners, if you'd like to come up. So first of all, I'm going to tell you about a gentleman, but first of all, this is a posthumous reward award, so I'm going to invite Ann Covington-Brown. If Ann, you could come on up here. Let me tell folks about your incredible husband. It is a distinct pleasure to nominate Phil Brown posthumously for the 2022 Governor's Volunteer Service Award. Brown passed away on December 8, 2021, at the age of 81. He made a measurable impact on thousands of Randolph County residents as a dedicated, passionate, and proud volunteer for Randolph Senior Adults and the AARP Foundation Tax Aid. The depth and breadth of Brown's service over the last decade was extraordinary. His outstanding leadership qualities demonstrated through his contribution to the ARP Tax Program, as well as several other volunteer roles. This distinguished him among the volunteer peers. Mr. Brown began volunteering with the ARP Foundation Tax Aid Program after retiring from Energizer Battery Company as an electrical engineer. For more than 15 years, he led a group of volunteers in helping thousands file their taxes every year for free. On average, he and his team met with 1,500 clients and filed more than 120,000 tax returns each year, saving Randolph County residents an average of 250,000. Would you like him to do your taxes? Absolutely, absolutely. So I just need to say this. When COVID came to Randolph County in March 2020, Phil was able to pivot around and turn around and do everything online for the volunteers. So for Phil and for his family, for the Senior Adults Association here in Randolph County, I think we give a huge round of applause to Ms. Ann and to your husband for everything that he did for Randolph County. Thank you so much.
On behalf of Phil, I want to thank Ann and Jill for nominating him the Families' Girl. He appreciates that.
Thank you, dear. We appreciate it. And I'll just say, we have volunteers of every age group. The next volunteer I'm going to tell you about is actually at college, but her mom and dad are here tonight to accept her award. So I'm going to ask Mr. and Mrs. Bitman to come up, and let me tell you a little bit about their daughter, Anika, and I will read everything that this young lady has done. She is with the Spirit Horse Ranch Rescue and Education Incorporated. She volunteered over 600 hours. Anika first started helping when she was 16. She loves horses and children and had lots of horse knowledge. She wanted to learn all she could, and as soon as she got her license, she came every afternoon when she could. She helped with the after-school program, and the children got to spend time outside and learn about horses. Anika is soft-spoken and very easygoing, and she helped all of the children do their chores while they were there. She did that for five months until her classes started back, but continued to come and help every afternoon. During the month of July, they have a summer program and a reading program for grade school children. Many of them struggle to read. She would sit with them in the barn as the kids read their favorite horse with the help of their volunteer. Some of these children are embarrassed because they can't read, and Anika made them feel confident. We thank Kanita for all of her work, and we certainly thank Rosie Goldstein, who runs Spirit Horse Ranch and the work that they do for young children. And please, when you see your daughter, big hug for all of us, and congratulations. I'm kidding. It's not allowed. He already told him that this evening. I would like to ask Kyle Martin, if Kyle could come forward. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Kyle. Kyle works with the Disabled Americans Veterans. Kyle has volunteered for the Disabled American Veterans in Ashboro on a monthly basis. He is the adjunct for the chapter he volunteers with, and he works right under the commander and keeps up with all the paperwork and emails. Other than the DAV, he donates blood to the American Red Cross every two months, which goes to people all over North Carolina, Virginia, and South Carolina. He also volunteers with hospice, so can either be seen with a patient, call them, or write them letters and cards. Mr. Martin is a great volunteer and fully embodies volunteerism. He started volunteering when he was in the military at a car museum and a food bank, over 700 hours of volunteering. When he got out of the military, he came back home, thank you for coming back home, and started volunteering with the Disabled American Veterans Group. He does over 200 hours a year, including this, with the Disabled American Veterans. He donates blood and basically gives of himself to our community. He's a great volunteer, and we know that he is the perfect candidate for this award. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Kyle a round of applause. And our next two volunteers are given the award for a team, and I'd like to invite them both up here, and that is Joanne Bostic and Kanita Matthews. If you could come up, and they're with our Daily Bread Soup Kitchen. It is our pleasure to introduce you to these two lovely ladies, who support the soup kitchen in many, many ways. In fact, I had a meeting myself with Joanne last week, so we're very, very adverse in what they do. Kanisha is the cook, and Joanne is my cleaner. Well, they're coming to my house now, sorry. They both are from local, they're, excuse me, from cooking and cleaning to stocking shelves, putting out clothes, shopping. We could not do what we do at the kitchen without them. They volunteer their time three or four times a month while I go off and do what I need to do. These ladies are awesome. They're part of the reason why they should be considered as the Governor's Awards, which they have won. They lead Bible studies on the days they volunteer before we start to prepare food. They pray for all of the individuals that come, and when someone asks for prayer, they pray and minister to the volunteers who ask when they come. They treat everyone equally, and they want to be treated the same way. Joanne, and this is what a young man called Joanne, "my left and right hand." So I think we all want a Joanne, just like that. Joanne does the financials and does what it takes to put in the long hours to make sure everything stays straight. She logs in so many hours, over 50 hours a week. Ladies and gentlemen, without individuals like Kanisha and Joanne, the soup kitchen would not be what it is today, so I think they deserve a huge round of applause. Our next volunteer that we would like to speak about this evening is Sandra Lael. And Sandra, if you would please come forward. Sandra volunteers her time for the Randolph-Ashboro YMCA, over 4,300 volunteer hours annually. Sandra Lael was the first person I met in 1995, when I began my career as the director of the YMCA. Sandra was a member of the Randolph-Ashboro YMCA's International Management Program, which brought business and companies together once a month for seminars and training. I asked her if she would take on the role of the president's position of an IMC program, and she was fulfilling all the requirements for our national organization. Within a year, she increased membership by 25% and increased female participation by 50%. Thank you for that. The world would not have happened without Sandra. Her competency and enthusiastic leadership is incredible. Scholarship programs began in 2015. Sandra was asked to be on the Board of Directors of the YMCA and soon became a member of the Executive Committee. In 2019, she became President of the Board of Directors, a position she holds today. She has developed new policies, programs, and enhanced the operation of the YMCA. This past two years of the pandemic has been challenging for all of us, but she has stepped up and supported the YMCA and myself through everything. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Sandra a huge round of applause. Thank you so much. The next one individual, and the last one, and it's not last, by no means least. This individual has traveled all the way from Virginia to be here this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to invite Drew Maris to come on up to the podium. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Drew, and for those of you who don't know him, he just moved to Virginia recently from Ashboro, has been an incredible individual for the Boy Scouts over the last, gosh knows how many years. Drew serves two crucial roles in delivering a key element for the Boy Scouts of America Program. He is the head advisor to select camping and service fraternity known as the Order of the Arrow, which currently compromises 600 youth and 300 adults in this chapter. He is responsible for guiding and electing youth leaders of this group, often college-age, to plan and execute approximately eight major weekend events per year. Many of these events include service projects that require meticulous planning and attention to detail led by the youth. His experience gives him a tremendous amount of project management and nomination skills in the years he has served in various capacities with his fraternity. He has continued to the leadership development of hundreds of young people and emphasized a commitment to lifelong learning. The Boy Scouts of America, recently the Old North State Chapter of the BSA, recognized Drew's leadership with the fraternity by presenting the highest recognition that can be bestowed on a scout volunteer, the Silver Beaver Award. Drew is also a member of the Small Committee of Adults and provides business leadership to registered groups in Randolph-Davison and Davie Counties, and may I say, probably in Virginia now. I see he's nodding his head. So ladies and gentlemen, I will have to say this. I've known Drew since I came here, which has been 17 years ago, and I'm so thrilled to say that he has been an incredible volunteer and support to Randolph County, and I know in Virginia, where he has moved to, he will do just the same. So let's give him a huge round of applause. I just want to say thank you. We had one other individual who could not be here tonight, and we will make sure to give Deborah her pin and her award from the governor. It is always an honor to be here, and I certainly know there's a lot on the agenda, but I do want to say, if you can volunteer, give it your time, give it your talent. You can give your million dollars, that's fine, too, but really, what you have in your heart and your soul in Randolph County and anywhere you are in the world is so important to give back, and so I thank you all so very much. I thank Senator David Craven for being here this evening and celebrating with us, and to the commissioners. I thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Elizabeth, for those recognitions are very well deserved. We appreciate those folks in the community and all our other volunteers as well, but it's nice for those folks to get some recognition tonight. We do have a couple of other folks I'd like to recognize. Former Chairman, Commission Chair Harold Holmes is with us tonight, so if there's not enough pressure on me with Commissioner Frye at home probably watching us, I got former Chairman Holmes here. There is an extra seat up here if you'd like to. Don't want to do that, okay. See, A.C. Hurley, the mayor of Franklinville. I've got some folks over there from Ramseur. I don't want to miss anybody, but appreciate y'all all being here tonight. This brings us to our period of time of our public comment period. I'll ask our attorney, Ben Morgan, to read the procedures.
Thank you. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Sharon Costelli.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you. I am the superintendent of Uori Charter Academy, Dr. Sharon Costelli, and I am responsible for over 1,900 students and a staff of over 200 that primarily live in Ashboro City and Randolph County. Since UCA does not typically brief at the commissioners' meeting, I wanted to provide you with a quick update. First, this year marks UCA's 10th year anniversary, and today, the state reviewed our application for our first 10-year renewal, which will receive a determination in January. While we wait for that determination, our students and I are blessed to be an active part of this community. We have partnerships with RCC, DSS, communities and schools, and we participate in athletics, the chamber lift program, and I have been supported by both school superintendents, Dr. Gany and Dr. Woody. As many of you know, currently, we are in the middle of a huge build that includes a new high school and career academy, and this build allows us to move our elementary school students to our current high school. This construction not only allows for growth, but it puts all of our children on the same campus. It is due to our positive relationships in the community and with our commissioners that we found ourselves not being able to meet our timeline due to a septic capacity issue, and this board met with Ashboro City and Seagrove Ula, and all parties agreed to have a plan that not only helps UCA, but all the future builds. Again, I'm here to say thank you on behalf of the staff and the students, because without the community of the stakeholders and your support, UCA would not be the successful school that it currently is. So thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate what y'all do down at Charter. Enjoyed the signing of the beam last week, so congratulations on the building that you got going on down there.
Dwayne Roberts.
Good evening, Dwayne Roberts. I've been hearing all this rhetoric about business is not coming to Ashboro and Randolph County because of our beautiful Confederate Memorial out front here. I think we all know that that's not true. Just a couple of evenings ago, that came across my phone that Archdale was receiving a 500-acre, 200-house housing development. And just Thursday evening, I come up Sunset Avenue, and it was so packed that you could actually walk faster than I was moving in my car. And that was for safety reasons of the pedestrians and all that. Also, coming up Sunset, I noticed two new businesses, two new businesses that are at least new to me, The Black Lander and The Bun Hut. Going, and I guess that Honda Jet and Toyota didn't get the email that we have a Confederate Memorial out here. And then come to find out, Four Saints has set their business up a block and a half away from our beautiful memorial. Thank you, good evening.
Thanks, sir. Is that up? Okay. All right. Thank you for the comments tonight. We appreciate y'all being here. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any one of the commissioners would like to further discuss or pull from the agenda? I would like to mention, and as I kind of always do this time of year, I see Tracy Murphy is here with Social Services, but this month is Adoption Awareness Month, and as being adoptive parent, it's always special. My daughter was, or adoption was actually finalized in November, November 20th, so always a special time for us. But I would like to read the proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month, which is in November. Whereas November is celebrated nationally as Adoption Awareness Month to express the right of every child to grow up in a permanent, secure, and loving family, and whereas the adoptive experience provides the foundation for happy, productive adulthood, and whereas the Randolph County Department of Social Services currently serves 237 children in substitute care who cannot, who live apart from their birth families, and adoption is the permanent plan for 108 of those children, and whereas Randolph County actively promotes the timely adoption of these children and has finalized 38 adoptions since July 1, 2021, some of whom have special needs. And whereas children waiting for adopted families and those families who have adopted these children require and deserve community support, now therefore be proclaimed that the Randolph County Board of Commissioners recognizes November 2022 as Adoption Awareness Month in our county, and we urge our citizens to recognize and support these observance this day, September 25 of November 2022. So just wanted to get that into the record. Any other things on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, let me know in saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. All right. First item under new business, Children's Home Society, the study results. I believe Commissioner Haywood, you're going to handle that one.
Yes, thank you. Back in November of 2021, the Randolph County Partnership for Children requested funding for an early childhood community survey in order to more effectively identify the needs of children and caregivers in Randolph County. The partnership used for this survey, the Institute for Families, a division of the Children's Home Society of North Carolina, and they completed the study. This organization, the Children's Home Society, has had a presence in Randolph County for over 40 years, and their reputation is sterling. Tonight, Donna Wood, their strategy director, is with us to present those findings. As she comes forward, let me also... As she comes forward, let me also say to anyone who is listening from home that we're doing something we have not tried before. But if you are live streaming, you may follow along with the presentation that we are seeing here by clicking the link that was just posted to our Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube pages. You can also find it in the news section of the Randolph County government page.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for having me this evening to share some of the findings from the assessment. It was truly an honor to work with Randolph Partnership for Children, and the many residents that we spoke to throughout this process expressed their sincerest gratitude to the commissioners for funding this effort. Just for context, I wanted to remind you all that a particular emphasis for this process was to really better understand what's driving children coming into the Department of Social Services, and particular what's leading to the increases in foster care that are being seen in Randolph County. So we worked very closely with Tracy and her team from the Department of Social Services who provided incredibly valuable information. So as we jump in, I wanted to start by saying the three things that I think are most important for you to walk away with tonight, if you remember, nothing else. So first and foremost, families in Randolph County are increasingly overburdened, particularly around economic hardship and transportation. The second is that the increased needs of families are driving child welfare, foster care, and county expenses up. And the third, and I would say this is the most important, that Randolph County residents can come together to change this pattern. Throughout this process, it was evident what a wonderful community Randolph County is, how much residents care, and it was very clear that this trend is likely due to people not knowing how they could be part of the solution as opposed to not wanting to be. So in terms of the process that we use, we looked at four kind of key things. The first, we partnered with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill researchers to do an analysis of quite a bit of population health data, as well as DSS data. Second, we did an environmental scan to see what kinds of tools, resources, and community organizations are already providing valuable supports for families. And for this, we looked at both formal organizations and nonprofits, as well as more informal supports for families, including grassroots organizations that were already coming together. The third, we interviewed over 100 residents in Randolph County, including 81 caregivers and 26 community influencers. For the purpose of this, a caregiver was defined as any adult providing care for a child. And we worked with many parents, grandparents raising grandchildren, aunts, uncles, any kind of array of families. We did emphasize families that are experiencing some of the stressors that can often lead to child welfare involvement, because we were particularly interested, again, in learning more about what's driving that cycle. So as I share the findings, just keep in mind that about 80% of our survey respondents of caregivers identified having a need in one or more areas such as housing, shelter, clothing, transportation, food, mental health, or other kinds of supports. In terms of the community influencers, we met with school officials, elected officials, Justice Center, faith-based communities, donors, volunteers in the community, among a whole host of others. And then the final part of our process was, we did a media analysis. Because what we know from research is that most citizens only know about Department of Social Services or families involved based upon what they read in news stories. And so we really wanted to see what kind of information people had been exposed to, how that kind of compares to the actual incidence of child welfare-involved families, and most importantly, whether or not those stories presented a possible solution. The other context piece I wanted to touch on briefly is what we mean when we say going upstream in child welfare system. So if you imagine a continuum from left being upstream all the way to the right downstream, when we talk about the most upstream, we're talking about all families in a community and really making sure that every family can thrive. A little bit further down from that, we start talking about families that are overburdened by different kinds of stressors that can lead to child welfare involvement. And when we're talking with families in this sort of area, we're usually focusing on preventing those initial DSS reports from being made. The black line here represents the point when families are reported, and then how they flow through the system beyond that. So we have families that are reported to DSS that receive no services for a whole host of reasons. Either their cases are screened out, or there's not enough information. There are families that are served by DSS where the primary goal is keeping the family safely intact, so children being seen in their homes. And then the furthest downstream on this continuum is where children are removed from the home, and the goal becomes more focused on reunifying that family and preventing future harm. So for the purpose of this report and these findings, when we talk about upstream, we are referring to these yellow and gray areas on this continuum. Okay, so let's go over some of the results. So just in terms of demographic trends, as I'm sure you know, Randolph County ranks 20th in terms of the 100 counties in North Carolina in terms of size. And the population growth has looked different. So there's been slower growth in Randolph County than in North Carolina as a whole. And the child population in Randolph has been declining, whereas the child population for North Carolina has been growing. The community currently primarily identifies as white, about 79% of residents, followed by 12% of residents that identify as Hispanic, 7% Black, and 2% Other. But again, this is changing. Over the past 10 years, there's been a steady decline in the white population with a corresponding increase of population of color, particularly for Hispanic and Black families. So as we began the assessment, the first thing we wanted to know about were the community strengths. What do people really like about the community? And what are the many assets that Randolph County has? And so we asked an open-ended question of our respondents. What do you like about Randolph County, and how are they supporting families? As you'll see from this chart, by and large, the most dominant response we received was how close-knit the community is. We heard people really talk about how much community residents care about one another, how safe and supported people feel living in this community. And this was followed by both groups really noting the peaceful nature of the community. So the geographic spread, people really liked that they weren't living on top of each other. It wasn't so congested, and that they really had a beautiful community to call their home. From there, we found a couple of key differences that emerged between the two groups. The caregivers that we spoke to really emphasized appreciating supports in the community that help meet their basic needs. We heard a lot about our daily bread food kitchen, which I saw was honored this evening, as well as some of the basic needs supports that DSS offers to families. And then they also noted that other kinds of social supports for families that were very much appreciated. Whereas the community influencers were more likely to note education supports and community leadership as assets. We also asked about community strengths in a more structured format, where we provided respondents with a predetermined list of assets that we know help strengthen families and keep children safe. Of that list, these four assets, parks, churches, well-resourced schools, and support from family and friends, were noted by both groups as being accessible to many families in the Randolph County community. So from there, we pivoted to look at what are some of the community needs or opportunities? What kinds of changes do people want to see within Randolph County over the coming years? And by and large, from both the data and the assessment interviews, the data showed that economic hardship is impacting families. There were more children living in poverty in Randolph, and there's a lower median income, which currently in 2020 was more than $10,500 less than North Carolina as a whole. And we heard families say things like, "We need better jobs, better benefits with jobs." Families make too much to receive things like food stamps, but they still struggle because they do not make enough to get by. And I will emphasize this idea of how much these stressors are impacting middle-class families, families that are working full-time jobs that still are struggling to make ends meet, was a theme that emerged. This next graph shows the median income growth in Randolph County compared to that of North Carolina. And as you can see, over the past 10 years, the rapid pace of growth for Randolph County has not kept up. So the gap has gotten bigger in terms of the income discrepancy between Randolph County families and families in other areas of North Carolina. So then we asked similarly in an open-ended question, what do families in Randolph County need? Of this open-ended question, 54% of respondents noted some kind of support needed around economic hardship. Minimum wage of $7.25 isn't working, county should do more. I'm in school, and the entry-level job I can get doesn't pay enough for childcare, but my boyfriend makes too much for childcare support, and we're not poor, but we're stuck in the middle. These kinds of themes just continue to emerge in these questions. And more fully, when we looked at all of the open-ended questions, the most common that emerged, you'll see both community influencers and caregivers noted economic hardship and transportation as two key areas that are impacting families. But we did notice an important difference that I want to point out here. When we were speaking to community influencers, they were much more likely to talk about needs around particular services. So services that address individual parent behaviors, knowledge, or skills. Whereas when we talked to caregivers, they were much more likely to note changes that they wanted to see at the community. They wanted more family-friendly activities. They wanted more access to things they could do with their kids. They wanted safer neighborhoods, job development. They wanted kind of those upstream community supports. So that's a key difference that may be helpful moving forward. And then, as I mentioned, we also had provided a predetermined list of assets. And while those four top assets, churches, parks, well-resourced schools, and support from family and friends were accessible by many, by and large, we found that respondents believed that most assets that help support children and families were only accessible by some people in Randolph County, some families. For the next part of the assessment, we wanted to map out what community health and wellness looks like within the community. This kind of mapping process can be helpful, because it can help guide where you might want to invest resources, particularly if resources are more limited, which I know they often are. And so for this, what we did was we looked at 27 different kind of factors across different domains, including economic factors, health and healthcare access factors, education, neighborhood environment, social support, which are things that typically buffer involvement from child welfare. So they help promote health and wellness of children and families. And the researchers basically created a composite wellness score looking at all of this data. And then they mapped and ranked from the 28 census tracts in Randolph County, which are basically small statistical subdivisions, if you will. They ranked them from lowest wellness score, which are shown here in red, to the highest wellness scores, which are those shaded in green. And then, of course, yellow is in between. And as you can see from the map here, five of the six census tracts with the lowest wellness scores fell within ZIP Code 27203. The fifth of the six was up in Liberty area. And just to, as a point of reference, this is the township and city maps. So our next obvious question was why? Why are some communities in Randolph County faring better in terms of health and wellness than others? And the overarching conclusion was that the patterns could not be fully explained. So for example, when we looked at one of the wealthiest census track in the community, which is highlighted here on the gray map in blue, we looked at corresponding factors that are often sort of related to wealth, such as income and education and employment. And what we found was that the unemployment rate in that community was greater than or equal to all but one of the tracks with lower health and wellness scores. And the percent of the population with a diploma over age 25 was also lower in the area with the highest wealth. So it didn't really seem that those things were accounting for the differences that we saw. However, we did find a pattern that there were greater percentages of people of color living in areas with lower community health supports. So for this, we took those 28 scores and divided them into five categories called quintiles. So you had the quintile with the lowest community wellness score, all the way to the quintile that had the highest. And as you can see for this map, in terms of the community with the lowest community wellness score, 67% of the population identified as population of color. And as you go down in terms of community wellness with increasing the wellness score, the number of residents that identify as populations of color decreased. I will note that this pattern is very similar to patterns seen in other communities. This is not unique to Randolph. And other communities, when they have tried to look at why, have found that things like historical policies and practices, sustained intergenerational trauma, things like inherited wealth or inherited poverty, or historical investment patterns around where money has gone in the community, all of those kinds of things can have a present-day impact that influences this pattern. So more exploration is needed in Randolph to understand, but that may be a place to start. So we also wanted to understand the community dynamics and how ready Randolph County was to take on a social change like this, like looking at children in foster care. And so we asked residents things like how decisions get made and how power and influence is distributed in the community. By and large, both groups told us that elected officials and longstanding wealthy residents have a lot of power and influence in the community. And both groups identified that there was some opportunity to engage more typical citizens in some decision-making processes. And we also used an assessment that looks at readiness for change in a community. And for this, the assessment that we use breaks out community awareness and readiness in nine phases, ranging from having no awareness on the issue being sort of stage one, all the way through having full community ownership and addressing an issue. When we did this assessment in this community, we found Randolph County was in stage three of nine. This stage typically means that few community leaders have some knowledge, but there are limited resources that have been identified to address the issue so far. And generally, that people believe some things should be done, but there's not a lot of clarity yet around what to do and who should act. So some things that can be helpful at this stage are just raising awareness within the community, presenting information at local groups, events, telling stories about the more typical experiences. I'm not going into it this evening, but in the media analysis, we found that typically the most egregious cases are, you know, in the media. And so residents have a skewed perception of what family experiences look like and how they can help be part of the solution. So really teaching community residents how to do that. Just through having these conversations in the community, we heard so many wonderful ideas. And so I truly believe there's an appetite for that here. So in terms of how all of this is impacting child welfare, what we found was that Randolph County does seem to have higher rates of child welfare involvement than the state as a whole. The investigation rate per thousand children is higher in Randolph County than North Carolina. The number of cases of abuse and neglect that are substantiated are higher, and the rates of children in foster care are also higher. So the level of burden that families are facing seem to be impacting. Just for a little bit more detail on foster care, we looked at a couple of comparative counties. So Orange County, for example, that has relatively same-sized population, they had fewer than half as many kids in care than in Randolph. So just to give you kind of a sense of what that trend looks like. We also found that the needs of families in DSS have become more complex across every level of intensity. So there are more families coming into the system. When they come in, the assessments are identifying an ongoing need more and more frequently. So if you look in 2016, about 20% of assessments made the determination that there was some type of need for this family, which is pretty typical from what is seen across other child welfare. welfare data. However, by 2021, that number had jumped to over 40%, which means that for every sort of family, for every case that comes in, almost one in two families that come through Tracy's shop needs some kind of support as of 2021. We also saw more voluntary services that were recommended, more services that were required over time, and more abuse and neglect substantiated. And then when we compared foster care, in looking at sort of the trend of foster care, for North Carolina, between 2016 to 2021, there'd been 2% increase in foster care. However, in Randolph County, that number has been about 82%. So there does seem to be something going on that's stressing families. We also tried to get a sense of why, what are the factors that are really driving child welfare involvement? One thing to note in this section is that more data is needed. Much of the data within DSS currently is on paper forms, and is not accessible, which I'll talk about in the recommendations section. But what we did find is that three factors pretty consistently related to the numbers of families that were assessed, whether or not services were identified as needed. And this particular chart is families that are being reported over and over again into DSS. And those three factors are basic needs, so economic needs, substance use, and domestic violence. Again, this is typical to what is seen for child welfare across the country. It is not unique to Randolph County. But the other thing that I'll point out is that each of these areas has seen increases between 2016 and 2020, again emphasizing that increased stressors facing families. The good news is that when we interviewed our community residents, 83% thought it was possible to prevent foster care by reducing stressors impacting families and increasing quality services that families could have access to. And then experts that we interviewed within the community believed that more family supports for grandparents in particular would be a really great step. And then we looked at how this is all impacting the cost. And what we found, as you can see from this chart, these are the different line items of the DSS budget. As you can tell, child welfare costs account for the largest portion of the budget, making up nearly 50% of the budget as of 2020. And these costs are also increasing at rates that are much quicker than others. So if you look at Medicaid costs, for example, or the energy programs, food assistance, those lines are relatively flat, meaning the trend over time has remained relatively consistent in terms of the costs, whereas the child welfare costs continue to grow. And those costs are projected to continue to increase. So we took all of this information and we boiled it down into eight key recommendations that I wanted to share with you tonight. The first two are really around enhancing relationships between overburdened caregivers and historical decision-makers, really bringing together individuals, sharing different perspectives. One of the things, as you noted from the, from this process, was that there was a lot of times different solutions, depending on your particular experience. And so bringing together groups and expanding shared decision-making processes to include those caregivers that are most overburdened could really help the community identify solutions. I have put two particular strategies within this presentation so that you'll have them. One is a program that I mentioned when I was here prior, which is called Strong Communities for Children. This program operated over a seven-year period in South Carolina. And they brought together residents, including parents, and they basically charged the community with identifying, how can we create a community support system so that children and families are safe and successful? Over the seven-year period, they found tremendous progress in what they were able to accomplish. So I put a couple of examples here, but emergency room and hospitalizations due to child neglect decreased 68% in the community that implemented the Strong Communities program, and only decreased 19% in the corresponding comparison community. And confirmed maltreatment rates for children ages two and under decreased 11% in the community that used this program, but increased 85% in the community that did not. So really just emphasizing that when communities come together to look at different angles of problems, there's a lot of positive potential. The other example that I, that I put here for you is participatory budgeting processes. And this is being done in some communities where really a pool of public funds is set aside, and residents come together to prioritize and make decisions how to use those funds. And there's lots of different ways that this can take place. But from communities that have done this, they have found that it has increased residents being involved in decision-making, increased trust and relationships in communities, and has allowed the community to identify and address unknown needs.
Donna, we're, go back one slide. With this, with this, with the dotted items that you just mentioned, were those part of the Strong Communities for Children program in South Carolina?
The, the, which-
At the bottom, where it says pilot participatory budgeting process-
No. No, the pilot budgeting-
Any of these in that program?
No. The pilot budgeting was a different community, or other communities. It's just a different strategy.
Okay.
Okay. The second two recommendations really focus on investing in addressing the economic hardship and that families are facing, as well as transportation, and shifting investments upstream. I've provided a lot of different examples, but I'll highlight just a couple for you today. In Wilson, North Carolina, they have recently been implementing an Uber-like model of public transportation, where residents can order through an app and have a transport arrive within 15 minutes, and the cost is $1.50 anywhere within city limits. And as a result of this, they have seen more residents report that they're able to get to work, and, and the initial findings look very positive. There are other communities who have done similar. I've listed a couple of here. Some communities that have taken an approach of sort of nonprofit financing of public transportation. There has been a community in West Virginia that recently passed a childcare facility tax credit, basically incentivizing businesses to create childcare so that families can have access to employment and know that their kids are in care. And then finally, I put a couple of examples of various programs that are being done to really address economic hardships facing families. So across the country, including in North Carolina, there are communities that are piloting guaranteed income or basic income programs that help supplement income to study and see the impact that that kind of supplement has on outcomes for families. So research would suggest, for example, that even a slight increase from $7.25 to $10 an hour helps outcomes. So many communities are testing in various ways what this looks like for their community. The next two are really speaking more to some of those unknowns. The first is really looking at the history here in Randolph County and identifying how any kinds of past policies or practices or investment patterns are having a present-day impact on the conditions facing families, and really prioritizing resources in areas with lower community health and wellness scores. One thing that we know is that when you focus resources in areas that have lower wellness scores or more opportunity, the investment, the return on investment for that is going to be greater. And then the last two recommendations, the first is around supporting the digitization of DSS data. So as I mentioned, Randolph County is currently one of many paper counties in the community, not because they want to be, but because for the past several years, the state has indicated that they are rolling out a data system that is going to be required for counties to utilize information. However, this has left Randolph County in a position where they currently do not have access to much of the information that they really need in order to be able to make the best decisions possible. So it, it would be helpful to look for opportunities to identify and clarify what the timelines are for that state data system, so that that influence can help progress that goal. And in the event that the timeline is going to be much further down the line, it may be advantageous to look at some kind of interim data solution so that Tracy and her team have access to more readily available data that's cost-effective. And then the final is building community awareness about factors that overburden families and how the community can help. There are so many simple strategies, offering free babysitting to a family in need, throwing community block parties to give families the opportunity to come together, recreational activities, soccer clubs, there's so many easy, low-cost ways to support families upstream. And there are many, many residents in this community who wanted to know what they could do to help. The last thing before I open up for questions is just to say that we will be hosting a community breakfast on Wednesday, December 7th, from 7:30 to 9:00, to talk to the community about these findings, and to really start a conversation about where Randolph County wants to go from here. And then you will also be receiving a hard copy printout of the full assessment. You should already have an electronic copy. And I apologize that the print shop had a mix-up and notified me today that those would not be available as intended, but I will be sending those to you next week when received. So at this point, I will open it up to any other questions that you all have.
Yeah, you have a location for the community breakfast?
Yes, it is at the Randolph County Senior-
Adult Center.
Yeah, Adult Center, there you go. Yep.
Yeah, as, as, as you were speaking, just a couple of things that came out. The disparity in North Carolina's, a lot of those statistics versus Randolph County, it would be interesting to see if you take out the large Mecklenburg-Waite counties to see how we compare with the more rural counties of North Carolina in some of those areas.
Yeah.
And how we compare to some of our, I, I don't think we very often get compared to Orange County and Forsyth County. Usually it's, I think, maybe Catawba, Catawba County, and maybe Davidson County, some of those others. Be interesting how we compare those. But the other thing, in, in the data, I wonder how much was nothing that we can do about, but how much is kind of exacerbated by the pandemic, especially some of the stress on families over the past two, two to three years?
Sure. I mean, definitely the pandemic has had a detrimental impact across the board on families. So families are more and more stressed, absolutely. And I definitely think that, that probably plays in. I think child welfare, you know, across the country, substance use, domestic violence, those things are in, indeed on the rise in other areas as well. And so really, it is a prime time to maybe think about what kind of strategies could be deployed now that could help create cost savings down the road.
And it's, is that going to normalize over a period of time? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I think that is, that is absolutely the question, because, you know, nobody's really seen anything like this. When the pandemic hit, I was working with our mental health programs in Texas and similar. It was like, whoa, mental health now went through the roof in terms of need. So I think it is really hard to know. But what we do know is that, as families noted here, sometimes the seemingly as simple as solutions, like having an after-school club where kids can come play sports together, something that simple can provide connections, which we know are critical, social support, which is critical to health and wellness, and that many times those strategies get overlooked. And so I think it would be advantageous as the community starts to think about what they want to do with this information, to really open up all possibilities and think about some of those more upstream strategies, and other things like peer-to-peer support. So parents supporting other parents, and things like that in the community.
Other questions or comments?
Somewhere in the full report, there was information about, like, as the cost for the number of children in foster care has gone up, the number for Medicaid, like reimbursements, has not kept up with that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, could you speak to that for just a minute?
Yep, that's, that's this, this one. And we did, the other chart that's in here for you breaks out the full, or most elements of the budget. But this is the one that speaks to that, where the trajectory of sort of child welfare expenditures have gone up at rates much more rapidly than other kinds of expenditures like Medicaid and energy programs and things like that.
Okay. Right, and I guess this next question is, is maybe for Tracy. You commented that DSS doesn't, doesn't have data digitized because the state has paid for that, and, you know, has talked about paying for that. And so that possibility is out there, and that's money that can be used elsewhere in their budget. So they've been putting that off. But some counties have done that on their own. Do you know how many have? Tracy, do you know anything about that?
The complexity of the data challenge is more than just to purchase or not.
Sure.
Approximately 30% of the counties in North Carolina, 30 counties out of, I mean, 30 counties out of North Carolina, approximately a third, have already purchased another form of data management. The challenge with the state is they no longer allow us to call-share those charges. So if you pay $100, $150,000 for a data management system, then that cost is completely on the county, because the state says, well, we have a system, just because it's not functional and you can't use it, we have it, and that's where our monies have gone. So we don't want you to be able to call-share. Did that answer your question?
You did. I'll have a, I, I may have a more in-depth conversation with you at some point in time so we can maybe get some, you know, more in-depth information there. But this is going to be a long meeting, so thank you. That's helpful.
Good job, Donna.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. Donna, thank you very much. A lot to digest.
Okay.
Excellent work.
We appreciate the report, and it was a lot of data in there. I'm a, I like numbers, but they can be overwhelming a little bit at times, so very detailed report. We'll move on to item B, annual update from Waste Management, Bob Peeler. And I can't let this go by, this is just too good an opportunity.
Bob, that's, that's a, you, you're not, you got a nice tie, I will, I will say that. And, and you're, you're a brave man to, to be here. I, I appreciate, and we got, I mean, this is, this is my night, because you've got Sam Varner here after a while, so condolences on your tigers.
Thank you.
You, you may get, you may get the Tar Heels, and you may thrash them, but-
Vice Chairman Allen, Commissioners staff, citizens, we're honored to be here to make this presentation. And last time, I don't think I wore my orange tie. And I get, my wife Donna said, do you think that they'll tease you about the orange tie? I said, they teased me, when I didn't have it on. But I, that was a rough, rough night. I was actually there, and it was tougher in person than on TV. But we'll head toward the game Saturday. Thank you for-
But you haven't had many of those in the last few years.
No, and it looks like on December 3rd, I think it is, it looks like the ACC Championship is going to be Clemson and UNC. So that'll be a-
Carolina's got to win one out of three, which may be a challenge.
That'll be a good, we look forward to it. But we, Mike McFeely and I are honored to be here, and we will be brief. We, you have our 10-page annual report, and I know that you've looked it over in detail, and also the citizens can look at it online. But I wanted to, first of all, I, I'm reminded every time I get to come to Randolph County of a lot of different things. One being, when we made our, one of our first annual reports, the late Stan Haywood said he had something to say, and I remember going home, he, he said, I wasn't for this, but I know that if Bob Peeler is involved, it'll be done the right way. And I think about that every- And I think about that every single time that I get to come to Randolph County. We're not perfect, but way back in, when we first got the contract, I've been coming here for over a decade. And then on January 9th of 2017 is when we received our first load at, at Great Oak Landfill. There's been a lot of life since then and whenever we've had an issue, we have tried our best to fix it and we'll continue to do that. But I wanted to, also today, this evening, Harold Holmes is here. Harold was Chairman of the Board of Commissioners when we first were approved for the contract to build and manage the Great Oak Landfill. It's always good to see Harold. And also Senator Dave Craven, and I know full well how much he loves this county and what it means to him. And I kid him, it's a pity that Senator Craven does not like a gathering of people. I don't know if I've ever seen anybody that cares more and then enjoys being around people more than Dave Craven. But I wanted to highlight a, a couple of things and then we'll open it up for questions and I'll certainly ask Mike McFeely, who is our District Manager. We have 22 people, 19 of who are Randolph County residents who work at Great Oak Landfill and our convenience sites. This isn't about me. This is about them and the 145,000 residents of Randolph County. And we know that waste isn't the most popular thing that you hear about or deal with, but we think that it's been a good partnership over this period of time. And I can think of, this report officially is about July 1st of last year through June 30th of this year. But since then, to highlight a couple of things on page three, and I won't go through every page. Since June of 2014, when we started or we got the contract, we have contributed almost 13 million dollars to Randolph County. The past fiscal year, the annual payment with CPI was 1, 1,214,063 dollars. And a couple of years ago, you approved a tonnage increase, daily tonnage increase. And because of that, this past fiscal year, it brought in another 301,793 dollars. In addition, over that period of time, we have paid almost 6 million dollars in solid waste taxes to the state of North Carolina. We have a Citizens Advisory Committee that was formed per the contract. Harold Holmes serves on that committee, we had a meeting last month. The COVID kind of affected when we could regularly schedule meetings, but we're getting back into that. And we always learn more from that committee than they do from us. And we appreciate those citizens who give their time and effort to serve on that committee. Again, we first received waste on January 9th of 2017. Ironically, that night Clemson won the National Football Championship. Vice Chairman Allen, not to bring up any sore subject. But as we move forward, it is important that we do it every single day. Mike McFeely and the other 21 people who are here every day, working on behalf of the people of Randolph County. This again, isn't about me, this is about them. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mike to say a few words and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you Commissioners, um, we continue Piedmont Land, or, um, Great Oak Landfill, sorry, Piedmont Landfill is a long time ago. Great Oak Landfill continues to operate at an average of about 3,000 tons per day. We can, we completed construction of cells six and seven back in August of this year and we're working in those cells right now. We just completed an expansion of our landfill gas collection system. Add in an additional 13 collection points to that system, so it's up and running right now. We continue to operate the conveni, the six convenience sites for the county, they all seem to be running fairly smoothly. And right now, I mean, that's, that's about where we are with the landfill, we're, uh, it's been pretty steady.
I, I appreciate the Citizens Advisory Committee because that's, y'all get some hard questions at those and, and some issues that come up from folks that are right there in the community, so appreciate you dealing with those. As a matter of fact, I got a call Friday, I believe it was, and we've gone over the tire issue. I'm, I'm getting some complaints again about tire, not being able to take tires to the, to the landfill site. How's that being addressed? Because therefore probably a five or six month period hadn't been an issue, but it just happened this past, past week.
We were, we were getting regular deliveries of trailers, uh, two to three per week from our disposal contractor, that's Central Carolina Holdings. The last trailer that we had delivered from them was delivered on October 28th. Last week, we got into the week, the trailers filled up. We had a couple trailers on that were dispatched that were supposed to be delivered, they never got delivered. We continued to call them, we called them on Friday. We finally got ahold of Central Carolina Holdings today because of, as of first thing this morning, they still had not delivered us any trailers. We got ahold of them, they had a mix up with their dispatch, they said that their dispatch was out. They sent their trucks to a cleanup job and so we did not receive any trailers last week. We had two trailers delivered first thing, or not first thing this morning, but by mid morning this morning. And we've already requested, we've already told them, go ahead and put two more trailers on dispatch, so. We, we did have a hiccup over the last 10 days.
I did hear this afternoon that there was some tires that were moving this afternoon.
They're back, so we, we continue to call, we, we call the trailers in when they get half full. So, and Central Carolina was doing a great job getting the trailers to us every week and then last week they just had a logistical problem.
Well, at least that's not a systematic situation, so that sounds, sounds like it can be remedied pretty easily, okay. Other, other questions?
I might, I might, yes, add that I got one of those calls too. And thanks for addressing the situation. I appreciate y'all, you're telling us what the, the deal was. And again, living over at Farmer and having the Farmer Convenience Site there, it's been a while since I've had any calls about that. Apparently it's running well, I use it and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, it's a very convenient for the local area and then we appreciate it being there. Keep on those trailers guys, that's all I know.
Yes, sir.
Cause that, that's the one, Mr., Mr. Vice Chair, I guess I should say, that's the one issue that I've gotten any calls about. And I believe if there were other problems with convenience sites and things, I'd hear about it, but I've heard nothing, so that's a good thing. And I think people are used to when the dates are there, when they're there, when they're not there and we're getting used to that, that kind of thing. And, uh, I think you guys are, are doing a good job with that, that side. Can't talk about the other sites necessarily, because they don't have to use them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, one in Liberty seems fine, I, I know, I haven't got any complaints about any of the others, so. No news is, is good news from that standpoint. And I will point out that you mentioned, Bob, I think about 13 million dollars in funds that's been generated. A lot of that money's gone to fund our strategic plan initiatives and that's something that I think's been good for the community and some of the things that we may have talked tonight, uh, we heard on the report earlier. Those are the type of programs that this, this money will go to fund, so. We, hopefully we can continue to do that, so we appreciate that.
It is, and I think a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the ribbon cutting at Lydia's Place. And I know that, that Waste Management Great Oak has made a direct contribution to Lydia's Place and the county earmarked some funds for Lydia's Place from the, from the fees that we have paid. So we think it's made a positive difference and we'll continue to follow up, whether it be at Great Oak or convenience sites or any issues, whether it be tires or anything else. We assure you that we'll continue to follow up on that and it, as I'm, again, here this evening, I miss seeing Chairman Darryl Frye. And I know that we, Mike and I join all of you and everyone in wishing him well as he recovers. Are there any other?
If I could just add that on Saturday, I was in Seagrove and one of the things that the, that the money was used for in Seagrove was at the Clay Presnel Park and the softball fields were packed, people were pouring in and the disc golf, um, courses there and that brings in revenue. And the mayor made the comment that they might even be able to, you know, reduce taxes a little for the citizens because of the revenue that's generated, you know, with these tournaments. So he was excited about that, so that, I mean, that shows the benefits, you know, for, not just for the health and wellness of our citizens, but also, you know, for their pocketbooks.
Makes a difference every day. And I, and I'll leave you with this, and again, I, I promised that we would be brief. I'm Vice Chairman of the Clemson University Board of Trustees, but whenever I need to know something about Clemson, I call Sam Varner. Because believe me, he knows before I do, somehow.
Appreciate you, any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say, I, I do appreciate what you guys do. It's, it's, it's not an easy job, I know, but you really make it look smooth. And from, from me to you, I really appreciate what you guys do. The other thing was, we did, several of us attended the, uh, the, the meeting, the Citizens Meeting and I thought that was very nice and, and a very, very well, well-run meeting and I think everybody that was there kind of enjoyed what, what was going on.
I appreciate it, we learned something every time we have a meeting or when we're out in the community. It, uh, you see what's really important and it's the citizens of Randolph County, we're, we're honored to be part of it.
All right.
Well, I've told you before, I guess I'll say this, is that I do carry my trash all over the county and try all the convenience sites, so they all do seem to be running real well. You've got some great folks, like you said, employees that are very friendly and helpful at those and y'all know how much I appreciate it. I just want to say, every, you know, I haven't got any calls or complaints in a while, but every time I have anything at all, I check with one of you guys and I get an answer like that and, you know, it's taken care of or handled or attacked, so I appreciate that for, from our folks here in Randolph County.
Thank you.
All right, thank you folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item, item C is Senator Dave Craven. Community funding allocations, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about some of that funding?
Sounds good to me. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me here this evening. Uh, it is because of the relationship we have in Raleigh with our state and county elected officials that we're able to be here and do this tonight. So our citizens here hear about the zoo, they hear about our agriculture center, uh, what they make me say, the Food, Farm and Family Center, but I'm always going to call it the Ag Center. They hear about the large investments we make from the state in our communities. Sometimes we have needs that don't quite make it to the top of everybody's list and so, uh, tonight, we're here to make some appropriations. The state sent the county $600,000 to look at some of these areas and, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, if you will, I can read these if you want to, whatever.
Yes, this is your, 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 your list.
The, the recommendations would be Experience Liberty, $25,000. Your Choices Randolph, $50,000. Randolph County United Way, $50,000. We've worked with United Way to ensure they've got four divisions there that they're going to get that money out to and help us. The Former Civitan Club, $10,000. Randolph County Family Crisis Center in relation and conjunction with the Emmys House, $20,000. Randolph County Sheriff's Office, $20,000. Ashboro Downtown Development, $10,000. Randolph County Crime Stoppers for new equipment, $20,000. Our Daily Bread Soup Kitchen, $10,000. Randolph County Animal Shelter, $20,000. Honoring Our Veterans, $20,000. Ashboro Raiders Youth Football Program, $5,000. Ramsdale Food Pantry, $5,000. Petty Family Foundation, $20,000. Habitat for Humanity, $10,000. And all of our municipal and volunteer fire departments will receive a $10,000 unrestricted grant, which totals $200,000. That's the recommendation, Mr. Vice Chair, and stand for any questions.
I saw a lot of the fire departments had submitted some of the information they were going to use those funds for, from radios to turnout gear to.
Absolutely.
Special items, so I, I think, uh, I think you attended and some of the Commissioners attended the Fire Council Chief's meeting. And they, uh, they were very appreciative of that and, uh, and, you know, those funds, especially for a small department like, uh, U-Hope or some of those folks, $10,000 is a lot of money.
And we didn't forget Bennett. We added Bennett back.
Get Bennett back in there, so, uh, they were very, very appreciative of that. So we appreciate the, the funding that's coming down and putting these dollars to work. And a lot of these are the same type of community initiatives we use for the Waste Management Funds with the Strategic Plan, so. Any, uh, any comments or questions for Dave?
Just, thank you.
Thank you for what you've done, David, and, and, uh, I see Carolyn with Your Choices Randolph sitting back there. It was absolutely fantastic and, and very, very needed with, with Your Choices Randolph. And, uh, I think, I think it shows, uh, not on your commitment to the county, but, uh, what, what this county means to so many people.
Thank you.
Well, you said it Senator Craven, I mean, uh, you know, we've talked about this list a lot and all these priorities and everything and, and I just appreciate you and your efforts in bringing these tax dollars back to Randolph County and our agencies here that touch people's lives. I do have a voting question, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Since this is kind of passed through, I don't know how these dollars are actually going to get out to all the agencies in, involved, from board members' involvements with some of these organizations, how are we going to do this vote? Basically, do I need to recuse myself from one of these votes?
If I may, Mr. Vice Chair, I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Chairman Frye, Hal Johnson and Will for, for kind of really putting this together and making sure that we had the ability to get it out. My understanding is the paperwork has gone out, folks have been able to submit that back with the grant application. And, uh, yeah, I believe it'd be a slate as a whole that really wouldn't affect, but I'll let Ben make that call as your legal counsel.
I, I agree, I mean, I don't, I, I think you're voting on this as.
A block.
Yeah, we'd be too because.
But, I mean, I'm fine, you know. I think you're, I, I think you'd even be okay to vote with it. Give it your own as words, but yeah, as a slate, it's fine.
Okay, I, I'll defer to Ben's knowledge on that, so we'll, we'll take it as a, as all, but that's a good, good point. And that's something we do have to be careful with as elected officials making, uh, being on appointed boards and, and volunteer boards. We don't want to have any perception of being a party there, so, uh, thank you for the disclosure on that.
Well, I'm not on any of those boards, so I would like to make a motion to approve the funding allocations provided by Senator Dave Craven as outlined in the agenda packet.
I, I'll second that, so that way, uh, we got two out of, two out of the four there. Any other questions or comments, discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed and motion carries.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. I think Kenny, as a matter of practicality, it would have been two to nothing anyways, I'm so, uh, I don't think it would have made the difference anyways. We appreciate that. Uh, item D, 100 healthiest places, workplaces in America award, Commissioner Haywood and Wellness Officers, Sam Varner. I, I've done my Clemson thing tonight, so I'm going to spare you this time.
You just beat us up, don't you? You just beat us up, don't you?
Well, there's a December meeting on the 6th, I believe it is, so that's after the 3rd, best I remember. So, we'll see how it comes out there.
Fingers crossed. I wore this for you today.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, what an honor to be here tonight. Did you want to say something first?
Yes, Randolph County hired its first wellness director, Sam Varner, back in, was it 2016?
2015.
2015. Since that point in time, Sam has initiated programs and built community partnerships that have benefited the health and well-being of our employees. Each of the past three years, Randolph County has been named to the list of the 100 Healthiest Workplaces in America. This year, we moved up to place 14th on that list, and that is quite an accomplishment. But I have to go farther and say that our focus, Randolph County's focus, on the health and well-being of our employees, shows how much we value each employee. We not only have a healthier workforce, but we're contributing to the health of the families of our 900-plus employees. A person does not fully realize what a gift health is and how valuable it is until it's lost. So, I'm thankful to Sam and the community partnerships he has built that offer services to our employees. And most importantly, I'm thankful to our employees, because he could not do what he does unless you got on board with changing habits, the way you think, the way you act, you know, behaviors, whatever, unless you got on board with working to be healthier. So, I'd like to thank all of our departments, I'd like to thank all of our employees, and because you participate, we've gotten this award, but more importantly, we can afford to have a good, solid insurance policy in place for you. So, thank you, and Sam, take it away.
This is the recognition that we have before us here. It says number 14th in the nation, and this is something that we should all be proud of. This summer, Spring Buck out of Indiana took several thousand applications for the Healthiest Workplaces in America. They only selected 100, and for the past three years, we have been on that 100 list, this year, number 14. But I have to go back and say, the key to our wellness program is not our programs. The key to our program is relationships. It's about loving all our employees, letting them know you care about them. They are our most valuable resource. This is only a sign of that we put our money where our mouth is, that we do value our workforce, we do value our families. And so, this would not be possible without our team. Hope Haywood, I appreciate all you've done. Hal Johnson, you've allowed me to flourish in this organization. Will, I appreciate all your input you've given me. I have a team behind me, Dana Crisco, Sarah Pack, Chelsea Butler, they are behind the scenes working to make this thing better. We have vendors in the community that help us. Ashley Duggans and Prebo Drug, they're vital. We have five board-certified health coaches that work with our employees. They make us better. We have a clinic that works with us. The list could go on. So, it's not one person that stands before you, it's this team behind this that makes it work. So, thank you for all your support. This is a great honor for Randolph County. By the way, I want to say, we were the number-one organization in North Carolina. We beat out Wake County, we beat out the city of Charlotte, we beat out the city of High Point, which has tons more money than we do. So, that's a credit to all of us in this room and all the employees, as Hope has mentioned. As I step away from here, I'm going to let you kind of bring this trophy around, and so you can touch it and look at it, so. Any questions?
I don't know if there's any questions. Maxton?
I don't have any questions about it, I just think you do tremendous job, and the size of t-shirt, I'm going to get this in right now, size of t-shirt is large.
Funny, I never got that email from you, Maxton.
That's because I didn't see you.
Okay, I got it. I'll catch you. Anyway.
You want me to extra large, okay, but whatever.
We'll take you.
But I did see that comment, that we needed to get that to him, and I wanted to make sure-
So, you've been notified.
Maybe I'm hopeful that some people are getting in shape, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks, everybody.
Sam, I appreciate what you do. I mean, this not only means dollars saved and long-term health benefits for our employees and a better work environment, but it also, we're in a very competitive employment market right now, and these type of initiatives and programs, that's what people are looking for, and it can differentiate us, because at the end of the day, we're an employer, and we're competing with a lot of folks for, you know, talent, and it's, this is something that we can hang our hat on, that can be tangible, it's just not, well, that's a nice thing that they do, but I think it's going to become more and more important that we do that.
My wife's been very supportive. When I told her we got 14th in the nation, her comment was, you couldn't get in the top 10. Anyway, thank you.
We thank you, Sam. Any other comments before we move along and get to touch the trophy? All right. Appreciate it, Sam. All right, we'll move on to Item E. We need to have a public hearing on the proposed schedules, standards, and rules for the 2023 reappraisal of Deborah Hill.
Good evening. As part of the 2023 reappraisal, Part Two, last month, that was Part One with presenting the schedule of values to the board. Tonight, the Commissioners are to have a public hearing to hear from any citizens that would like to comment about those schedule of values.
All right. I see you have your accoutrements there, okay. All right, so this has been a duly advertised public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and open the floor for anyone who wishes to speak regarding the schedules that have been publicized. Anyone like to speak regarding this matter? Not, I'll close the public hearing. So, I think that fulfills our obligation.
And then, next month, I'll be back to ask you to adopt the schedules.
So, we had a public, we've been introduced to the information, held the public hearing tonight, next week, then we adopt the schedules as we present. Okay. Thank you, we look forward to seeing you next month. Item F, RFID bid results for the library, Ross Holm.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. Before we get to the bid award request, I would like to share some late-breaking news. This past summer, the Liberty Library offered a program called No School Break Without Food. They received a grant from the Save the Children's Foundation to establish two food programs that aimed at ensuring that schoolchildren had enough to eat over the summer with no school lunches available, and that families have the ongoing means to cook low-cost meals. We were notified last Friday that No School Break Without Food has received the North Carolina Public Library Directors Association Outstanding Programming Award for large libraries. Now, it says large libraries, the county system as a whole is the award recipient, but this is all Liberty, and it's all the vision of Liberty Library Manager Brenda Hornsby Hindle, so congratulations to Brenda and her staff at the Liberty Library. So, back to business. We are getting a project underway to streamline our handling of library material through radio frequency identification of items, or RFID, or ARFID for short. We'll place a short-range radio tag on each book, DVD, audiobook, and other items. This will allow multiple items to be handled, checked out, checked in, processed, in a single hands-free transaction. You place a stack of items on a sensitized plate, and they're checked out to you or checked back into the library. Inventory is as easy as waving a wand across the shelf of books. With me tonight is Ian Fletcher, our brilliant network administrator who developed this project and is managing its implementation. One of the big benefits of ARFID to the patrons is self-checkout, which will be offered at each library, although staff assistants will always be available. We also expect, based on the experience of other libraries, to see a significant saving of staff time. This will enable us to redeploy staff for more substantive interactions with patrons. Our intent is to shift more staffing hours to the mobile library, which is very much in demand. It's not availability of the vehicle, it's availability of the staff to take it places, and that'll make us able to increase the number of stops and visits. The project is funded with Federal Library Services and Technology Act grant and a local match. Over the last two months, Ian, with the assistance of Purchasing Officer Lisa Garner, carried out a formal bid process to find an ARFID vendor. We received three responsible bids with good apples-to-apples proposals, and you have this in the memo in your packet, when I start getting tongue-tied saying thousands, but MK Solutions Incorporated at $125,875, with second-year maintenance costs at $4,955. Biblioteca at $142,782, with second-year maintenance cost at $11,632. And Tech Logic at $172,675 and 11 cents, with second-year maintenance costs at $6,720. The proposals include the ARFID staff stations, software, the inventory wand, patrons' self-checkout kiosks, some 345,000 ARFID tags for our current and future collection, and, of course, installation training and shipping. All the vendors proposed credible systems. MK Solutions of York, Pennsylvania, was the low bidder, both in terms of the system as a whole and ongoing maintenance cost. Ian did his due diligence in checking out the company and talked with one of their major customers, the library in Spokane, Washington. So, we are satisfied that this is the best solution. Therefore, we respectfully request that you award the bid to MK Solutions in the amount of $125,875, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract. I do want to note that the bid came in about $15,000 over the amount available in the grant and local match funding. We're able to cover that cost within our budget to afford this optimal solution. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, Ian and I are standing by to answer.
The MK Solutions, are they, where are they located?
York, Pennsylvania.
York, Pennsylvania, okay. I mean, not, used to that may mean a whole lot, as far as, but now with a lot of the internet and ability to be wired in remotely, it's not as big a deal as it used to be, trying to be local.
Yeah, I'm correct about that, right, Pennsylvania, yeah.
Any comments or questions for Ross? Would note that this is basically fully funded, we're just approving the allocation and the purchase.
Yes, yes.
There's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to award the bid for the RFID project to MK Solutions in the amount of $125,875, and to allow the county manager to sign the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Not, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item G, request for four new deputy positions. Justin Brute Baker, Sheriff's Office Business Manager.
Thank you, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. Just real quick, I would like to say, it was Sunday at 3:52 PM, and I got a text, I was playing on my son, and it said, hey, do you have everything ready for the presentation Monday? That was Captain Arrington that was texting me about it, and I said, yeah, I've got everything done, I'm just going to leave it to you or your lieutenant to present, and I'm not going to come. And the next text message I got back was really, so I'm very happy to-
I'm prepared.
I'm very happy to allow Captain Arrington, a part of our school-based programs, to speak on behalf of our request tonight, so if you would, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We would like to present to you tonight a request, the opportunity for you guys to take the time to determine if we could really use four new additional officers, and those officers would be covering our elementary schools. Now, before we get into the matter, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Brian Arrington, and I was born here in Randolph County, and I attended the school here in Randolph County and graduated from Eastern Randolph in 1989. I went on in a career of law enforcement, and started a little late, got there when I was, excuse me, 27, and one of my first assignments at the sheriff's office was as a school resource officer at Southwest Middle School, where I was little Justin Brute Baker's SRO. Now, during this time, we had some issues at the school. We had kids who would bring yo-yos and laser lights and giga pets and stuff like that we had to deal with. But as time goes on, as you know, and you've seen in the news, times have changed. When I was at Eastern Randolph, we didn't have to lock the doors. In fact, if you ever went to Eastern Randolph back in the 80s and earlier, we didn't have doors on the classroom. It was a free, open campus. No doors were locked. We didn't do lockdown drills. We did fire drills, because that was required, but we didn't prepare for the violence that our present day has presented to us. At Southwest, it was the same thing. Now, Southwest is a unique campus, and you can secure that campus really well. Some of the older schools, not so much. We have some of the greatest schools that you guys have approved and the county has built, with state-of-the-art technology, that are safer now than other times, but when I was growing up, we didn't have the need for SROs, and it didn't come until 1994. As time changes, the community and the sheriff's office agree that we need to change with it. And if violence is going to present itself to our schools, we need to prepare to fight it, and to keep it away from the kids of Randolph County. And that's why we're coming to you guys and ladies, is to present to you the need for four new officers in our elementary schools. Now, I'll answer a couple of questions that you may have already, is what will these four do when we have 17 elementary schools? But we're going to divide these officers up, where one officer would be in each zone, as we call it, and one would cover five schools, and the other three would cover four schools. And if you doubt that these officers will have anything to do during the day, I promise you, they will stay busy. Since January the 1st of this year, not counting the two and a half months we were not in schools, our SROs have taken over 675 reports or supplements of reports just in our county schools. Now, there's 16 laws that Randolph County schools and their administrators have to report to us, the majority of which are felony assault charges, weapons, and drugs. The governor has deemed that all child abuse cases be reported as well to law enforcement and DSS, so the number of occurrences that law enforcement is needed in these schools, even elementary schools, has went up dramatically. Now, without having these four, what we're doing now is we're taking an officer from the high school or middle school, and we send them to that sister school to deal with that incident, take that report, which leaves their assigned school uncovered. So, we get the job done with the number of officers we have, but we could better cover and provide safety for the kids of Randolph County, especially our elementary schools, if we could add these four officers, and to help give those schools the coverage they need and the service they need from law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. In addition to that, discussing the overall cost of what we have requested for you tonight, the total cost that includes salary and fringe benefits, vehicles, equipment costs and upfitting is from a period of time from January the 1st, 2023, up until June 30th, which will close out our budget year. And the cost that we're requesting tonight comes to a total of $384,004. However, in communications with Superintendent Dr. Ganey in the Randolph County school system, they have agreed to contribute $119,000-
contribute $119,007 towards that cost. So our overall cost that's presented to you here tonight is actually going to be quite more expensive for the first six months as opposed to a full budget year. We went ahead and actually estimated those costs out. So the total contribution of the Randolph County Schools will be a total of $238,003 up for the next budget year. Our total cost for the upcoming budget year in total is $305,004. So that just leaves the Randolph County Sheriff's Office responsible for $67,001. So you can see from the period of the six months, the initial setup cost, the new vehicles, all the upfront costs, that's what really hits the hardest. But as you know, in the current time that we're in, trying to order vehicles, equipment, and delays, we feel like this would be a much better issue to address sooner as opposed to later. Do you have any questions in regards to the cost or for Captain Arrington?
Any questions? I guess, and I know we've talked a little bit about SROs and whatnot, but I would like to ask Dr. Ganey if he has any comments he'd like to make.
Yes, I do. I would just like to say, big thank you to the Sheriff's Department. This, this conversation started, I want to say, late June, early July, in my office with members of the Sheriff's Department. And this idea started, what can we do to get better? We're not done, but we are going to get better with these four officers if we can make it go. We're going to add two. We're not going to take away those high school and middle school officers' connection to the schools already connected to, but hopefully this will slow the movement down. But this is another example of the great partnership we have with the Sheriff's Department. They are, they're a part of our school system. Obviously, we're separate organizations technically, but they are tremendous partners. And I'm in my 10th year here, and I just think it's just, every year it just continues to evolve. So I'm very proud of this. I will, if this goes through tonight, I will make some principals aware. They're not aware at this point, but this only helps us with our kids. And we, the Sheriff's Department has been great on the financial side, what we need to do and we're prepared to do it. We've been planning for this. And they've done it right. We've, we haven't said anything all year because when we want to talk about it, it's time to move. And be, and they've had to do some recruiting and training, and I appreciate that and I respect that. So it's a good day for the Randolph County School System. It's a good day for our partnership between the Sheriff's Department and our school system. And it's a good day for our kids and our staff because it's another step towards maintaining safe conditions on our campuses throughout the system.
Appreciate that information. I had a thought, and it just left me when you talked about some. Let me ask about the, the SROs, you know, not full-time, year-round, what happens in the summers for these folks? Oh, I know what it was. I got, I remember, I'll write it down, too. Go ahead, answer that, and I got to know.
So in the, in the summertime, we do several things with our SROs. As you probably read and seen on Facebook, we, we have camps. The students of Randolph County, three camps that involved individuals that are interested in going into first responders. And then we have a BRICS camp for at-risk teens that we partner with Juvenile Day Reporting Center to do. We also train. Our officers go through rigorous training of active or shooter responses and room clearing. And we train as if the day may come tomorrow, and we pray to God it never does. So when they're not in training and they're not running camps, we divide our officers amongst other divisions within the sheriff's office. A lot of our officers in, in the SRO program came from patrol and other areas, and we'll put them back into those divisions and let them help out in those divisions as well. And it only helps us learn more as SROs being out with other divisions doing what they do.
Any trouble, I know this is, any trouble hiring for these positions? Can you find folks to fill these roles?
I don't feel there'll be a problem filling the SRO roles because we have interest, we, we will have interest in the positions. We, we want to have the time to hire wherever these four are pulled from to train and put them to work before implementing it. So our goal, our goal is January 1 with this. So we, we have time to, if we pull from a division, we have time to train a new officer to take that position and run with it.
I just know it's hard to find folks nowadays. Any other comments or questions?
The only comment I have is, what's the cost of one incident? You know, what is that cost? And I know you have people that you have to deal with in SROs, and you have people like Mr. Brubaker here that is showing that, shows what kind of citizens you have to work with. And I think it's, I think it's a, a, a statement to make with, with this. But again, the, the question is, what, what happens? What's the cost of one incident? And we don't want that, we don't want to pay that price.
Any other?
Well, I was going to ask, Will explained the budget amendment for us, you know, financially wise. But I know, I've talked with Chairman Fry. I know he's, you know, talking to both y'all about how important this is and how much he cares about it. I don't want to speak for him. But, you know, and I know Dr. Ganey's had multiple conversations with him. And I appreciate, you know, Captain Arrington and the sheriff, you know, working together with school system, put something together. Because I know our students and families and parents will feel a lot more comfortable seeing, you know, this presence on campuses and God forbid, everything happens. But, you know, but at least he can take care of people like Young Brubaker when he's causing trouble at Southwest.
I didn't have much to do with him.
But no, it's... Isn't it interesting that he was my SRO in school, and now I'm up here at a Commissioners' meeting making a presentation with him, so...
Are you trying to help him out? But no, I know y'all put a lot of thought in, in this, trying to figure out how to make this best work for our school system. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Will, do you want to address the budget amendment and where the funds will come from?
I think the contribution will be from general property taxes and its appropriation of fund balance right now. We'll have to see how the rest of the year kind of shakes out. Still too early with sales tax because it's three months behind. We've only gotten two distributions. So whether it's savings that we hope to get from departments later on or additional revenues, it'll just have to check out later.
Okay. Good with you, Kenny?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make a question for the community.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions?
One other thing I would like to say, and I would like to thank him, if you would stand up, Lieutenant Bachelor, he's one of the lonesome heroes back there that's been very imperative in helping out with all these discussions. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Will entertain a motion. What a pleasure, Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that, that we approve this, this allocation.
All right. It's been moved that we approve these additional deputy positions for the Randolph County Schools and approve the associated budget amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate y'all.
Can I stay up here a little bit longer?
Justin, you, you get to stay for the next one.
And I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You're, you're by yourself on this one, though.
Well, I...
Well, no, you got...
I've got some hell, hey. Uh, no, Major Nun was going to assist me in helping speak in about the 15 vehicles that we're requesting tonight to purchase. These 15 vehicles are across both our North Carolina Sheriff's Association contract and the state procurement contract. Going to give Major Nun an opportunity if he would like to speak briefly about these vehicles. But our, the reason we're up here tonight for this specifically is because any purchases over 90,000 require approval by the Commissioners. Major Nun, would you care to speak a little bit about the vehicles?
So just like in the civilian world, getting fleet vehicles has been as difficult. It is getting a little bit better. We're still running into an issue of, hey, you tell us what you want, we'll put you on a list, we'll call you if we get it. We may not get it. You know, I tried to order some trucks. They got pushed off two years, finally got those. The good news with these vehicles is these are guaranteed. So actually, the, the 10 Chargers are here if we want them, and the five Fords are being built, and they're confirmed through Ford. They have VIN numbers, all that. So I feel comfortable that that won't be an issue with any of these vehicles, that we can get what we need.
This is the first batch, I guess, of the appropriation that we made as part of the budget back in, in the spring. Is that correct for this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And earmarked for us, ready to go.
They are, yeah, ready to go.
That's good.
Okay. Any comments or questions for these folks?
Make a motion.
I, well, I was, I was just, Ford versus Dodges, just out of curiosity.
You know, it's, Dodge has put us in a little bit of a situation because they're, this is the last year they're making the Charger, so we have to go somewhere. I figured this was a year to, to go ahead and start some, exploring some other options. We chose the interceptor, you know, looking at all the Michigan State Police testing and talking to other agencies that have it, we feel like it will be. And that's what a lot of agencies, even the state, is starting to move towards those Fords. So Dodge has kind of put us in that situation.
I understand, I understand. All right. Any, any other comments or questions?
I'll be glad to make that motion to approve the purchase of five Ford police interceptors and 10 Dodge Chargers in the amount of $528,745.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, let it be known, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Little Justin Brubaker.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Always remember that. That's how I need to be addressed from this day forward.
And who we thought you'd go to work for the sheriff's office? I mean, after that...
All that trouble, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is Paxton Arthur's, County Engineer with the purchase of some property.
Good evening. Will, did we have a, the presentation? Good evening. This is for the I-74 industrial site pump station property purchase. And just to give you a quick update and refresher on the project. Back in March, you had awarded a contract to Wooton Company to design the pump station and force main serving the site. At that time, it was only for this site. However, in June, you approved an amendment to the contract to expand the pump station to serve the entire sewer basin. This was done to provide for future development. At that time, the rentalman was going to provide water to the site, and all the sewer was going to be pumped south to Ashboro. Randleman had the capacity to provide for the site. However, it would use up all their capacity. So in order to preserve some of that, they were going to let the sewer go to Ashboro. However, recently, we learned that Deep River Di has closed. This was Randleman's largest water and sewer customer. And because of the impact this is going to have to their budget, they have asked for the water and sewer to go to Randleman. They've talked with Ashboro. Ashboro's in agreement with this. So this appears to be the, the way we're moving forward. We've asked Wooton Company to investigate this, and they think it will actually reduce the cost. However, it, it will extend the schedule a little bit. So they will continue looking into it, and we'll, we'll move forward. For this property, here's a map of the industrial site. This was a early conceptual map that was done for the Duke readiness program. And the area highlighted there in red is the location of the proposed pump station. And this is just off the property on a neighboring lot. And the reason for this is because this is a low-lying area, which is good for the pump station, and also because it has better access. So here's a more detailed drawing of that, that property. It shows the pump station. Sewer would go north to this pump station, and from there it would be pumped out to Commonwealth Road. We actually only need about a quarter of an acre to serve the site. However, because it's in a watershed, we do need to get about two and a half acres to meet the impervious surface area. So you have actually considered this the enclosed station previously, and you authorized the county to negotiate a purchase. EDC has sort of took the lead on this and met with the property owners. And recently, the county manager issued a letter, a purchase offer to the, to the property owners. And as you can see, they have accepted the offer and, and signed it and agreed to sell it for $76,398. So the only thing left to do is to approve this purchase. So if you would like to move forward, I'd ask that you approve the purchase of 2.568-acre parcel for the future I-74 industrial site pump station for a cost of $76,398, and that you authorize the county manager to sign the necessary paperwork. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think we've discussed this pretty thoroughly in closed session. I appreciate the hard work that you've done along with the EDC in getting this to this point. So any, any comments?
If not, then I'll make a motion to approve the negotiated price of $76,398 for two and a half acres for a pump station at the I-74 industrial site and allow the county manager to sign the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, let it be known, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Paxton.
Thank you.
All right. Last item of business in open session is the annual joint meeting of the Ashboro City School Board of Education to be February 9th at 6:00 PM, place to be determined. So does anybody have any conflicts with that? Is that a Thursday night?
I believe so, yep.
Okay.
It usually is, yep.
Okay. Would you, anyone like to make a...
Do I have a conflict with them? Can I talk about these? Yeah, I'll make the motion we set to do a meeting. That'd be great.
Okay.
Since it's in my district.
Well, and, well, we're meeting with school board members. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? Not? We'll vote. All those in favor, let it be known, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Any county manager updates, Hal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chairman, I wanted to remind the board that on November the 15th, we're going to have a very special training opportunity in Randolph County. It's a crisis communication training session that's going to be held at the, our emergency operations center. We've invited the municipalities and our fire departments and police and, and municipal, all our municipalities and the school systems will be in attendance. And, and this will be a, a unique event in Randolph County. We're bringing in a specialist that will help facilitate crisis communication between all these agencies. And certainly, if you can attend, Commissioners, that would, I know, a few of you are planning to attend, that's going to be a very special training opportunity in Randolph County. We're looking forward to doing that.
Anything else?
No, November 15th, November the 15th, 8 o'clock or, I believe it's at 9 o'clock at the emergency operations center.
Okay. All right. Is that it, Hal?
Yes.
Any comments from, updates from Commissioners?
I have a quick question, if you'll give me a moment of liberty. So is by any chance, is there anybody in the audience here, like, that's working on an American Heritage Girl badge? Maybe a citizenship or something like that? So, okay, all right. Well, appreciate you being here. We'll get you a copy of the agenda. And you sat through a long one, so congratulations.
Very seldom, unless it's your captive audience, like some of the department heads over here, you have the pleasure of sitting through an entire meeting. Dr. Ganey's usually one of those, too. So we appreciate y'all being here tonight. I will make note that a legislative goals conference for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners will be... County Commissioners will be that same week, I guess it'll be the 14th, 15th, 16th, I believe, and Chairman Fry is gonna be the voting delegate for the county, so appreciate him doing that. Any other business we need to take care of? If not, we need to go into closed session. If someone would make a motion, I would appreciate that. It's on the back of the.
I got it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions, appointments, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor of motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. We are in closed session, I will, don't think we will have any decisions or anything as we come out of closed session, so we thank you for being here tonight.